Being 5:30 PM, I hereby call the May 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. This meeting is being recorded for public viewing by Area 58. The recording is not considered an official record of the Board. The approved minutes of the meeting will serve as the official record of the proceedings. Our first agenda this evening is reorganization, but I think we're going to take these out of order while we await our new selectmen to join us. So Liz, did you want to?
Sure. Do you want to take care of the minutes from May 6th and May 15th first?
I think so.
Shall I make the motion?
I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of Board of Selectmen meeting, May 15th.
And May 6th.
And May 6th, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There were pretty, wasn't much to say, was there?
There was indeed not.
And then, Bree, do you have warrants paid total?
No.
Okay, let's move on. Why don't I do my update now?
That'd be great.
So we are awaiting hearing back on the Green Communities grant application that was submitted. We had to pull the Highway Department work out of the application, so we're going full steam ahead with the library, finishing the heating project. And then the plan is to work with Rob and the Highway Department to get an application together for an upcoming grant cycle. For that, we were capped at a certain dollar amount.
That's the reason for pulling Highway?
Yes. Yes. His project at Highway was a little bit more complicated, and it would have put us over the maximum allowable that we're able to get in the grant funding. So the thought was that we would finish off the library heating system and then come back around and pursue the work at the Highway Department.
Okay, good.
So that's going well. We are deconstructing from town meeting, getting all of the articles set up that were recently voted, and we're going to begin working on year-end closeout as we move closer to June 30th. So that's where we stand with that. And we're going to be figuring out if we need anything in the way of reserve fund transfers. The full reserve fund is available for use. We haven't tapped into that at all yet. So everyone's working on the current fiscal year and figuring out end-of-year budgets. Do you want to move on to Rob's?
I have a question, though.
Sure.
On the article for the Recreation Committee for CPC funds, is that now able?
Yes, that's available ASAP.
It's today?
Yes.
Okay, good, good.
So that concludes my update, and we do not have anything in correspondence.
Okay.
I can't, the warrant's paid for $5,030.33.
Thanks, Bree.
I would say we take five minutes, and if he isn't here by then, we then go into Rob's. So we'll be in abeyance for five minutes.
So we'll go into recess for five minutes?
Yes, recess for five minutes.
Okay.
Just to give him time since he's on his way. We've done these things.
Okay.
So recess is over, we're back in open session again. I think we should go directly into reorganization of the Board, but first, I'd like to welcome Dana Smith as our new selectman.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Let me just read the, for the reorganization. This is from Meeting Agendas and Meeting Contact. The Board of Selectmen operate under, we've approved this quite a number of years ago, actually in '21. Number 11, "At the first BOS meeting after annual town elections, the first order of business will be the election of Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk for one-year terms by majority vote of the Board of Selectmen. The Clerk will preside over the election of the Chair. The newly-elected Chair will preside then over the election of Vice Chair and Clerk." So, Mr. Clerk, you have to be honest.
My first, my last act is clerk. So we would like to go ahead with the reorganization. So nominations are now open for Chair of the Board, and with pleasure, I'd like to nominate John Traynor as next Chair.
Aye. I second the nomination.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And when opposed.
Thank you. So now I'll make a motion to, what were the words you used?
Probably nominate me.
Nominate.
As President of the Universe, oh no, as Vice Chair.
As Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen for the coming year. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Which leaves a nominee to Mr. Dana Smith for the position of Clerk of the Board of Selectmen for the coming year.
Second.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're reorganized.
I will notify all the towns.
Great. So next on our agenda is the Highway Department, Rob Ferro. Rob, you want to, you mind coming up here a little?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's easier on the mics. We've got a mic here, too.
So on May 1st, I was notified that Mrs. Wesley was in the cemetery with her dogs again.
Speak up, please.
Sorry, Miss, I was notified that Miss Wesley was in the cemetery again with her dogs. So I went up to talk to her, you know, explain to her that we had had...
Rob, we can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Explain that in the last selectmen's meeting, we had discussed how the dogs are not allowed in the cemetery, and that's Rule Number 7 on the Board. And she got a little upset with me, and she said, "That rule is your opinion, and it doesn't matter to me, and I will continue to walk my dogs here." And then the dog jumped on my door, and that kind of ended the conversation. I do have pictures of the scratch marks on my door. Dogs, I don't mind if, you know, somebody's coming to visit the dog, somebody's bringing their dog when they visit, like to a loved one, but...
So we have had this rule in effect for quite a while.
Yes, as long as I've been employed here, which is pretty soon to be 19 years.
I took a look at other towns, you know, to see what the opinion was, and it seems like a majority of the towns do not allow dogs in the cemetery. And it's, it seems to be out of respect, that most towns say they don't want dogs that either can defecate or, or potentially, you know, walk across a grave and have to go to their business. So I looked at Arlington National Cemetery also, they do not allow dogs. The only dog they will allow is a service dog, which I think makes sense. Some cemeteries, to alleviate that, have created walking paths, but they're on the outside of the cemetery so that it's not close enough that there's a problem with the dogs. I think that's something we can look at maybe in the long term, but I think in the short term, we have a rule and we'll have to live by it, but I, there's no doubt, we have to find places for people to walk dogs. And unfortunately, it's still that 10% who don't clean up after themselves that cause us the problem. We see it up here on the Hope Field, you know, Recreation Committee does not want dogs on the field at all, but they're putting in a walking path, and the walking path is, at least as I understand their opinion is, that dogs would be allowed, and they would just try to make sure that people clean up after themselves. We've also talked about having a dog park committee formed to see if we can find a spot in town that would make sense, and I think that's something we should probably go forward. Let my gentleman speak.
Well, a couple comments. I went up there as well and hadn't been in the cemetery in as long a time, and just as a digression, I'd say I was stunned, as I always am, as what a beautiful part of town that is, and a really integral part of...
You can hear what?
An integral part of the town complex that I think we're trying to enliven and have citizens take advantage of and become a community thing. There is a sign in the cemetery, it lists general policy, and number one on that is the responsibility and authority for enforcing all the rules and regulations rests with the Board of Selectmen and the burial agent. So I don't know how long ago that was made, I have a feeling it's a real long time ago. It certainly predates me, and it may have been decades and decades ago. Rule Number 7 is equally clear, dogs and horses are prohibited from the cemetery. I do wonder if maybe there's some middle ground, particularly in the sense of citizens taking advantage of another gem, which is sort of a hidden gem, which is Plimpton, and the possibility of changing the rules so that dogs could and their owners could walk on the roadways through the cemetery, not on the gravesites, not disrespecting the dead by being stepped on or the dogs soiling, but simply walking along on the paths. So I'd like to put that out there, at least for consideration, is that maybe there's some middle ground which really serves the dog over in public, serves the dog, but also serves the town in continuing to enliven the town complex.
Dana, you have any opinion?
Well, considering that both of my parents were buried at the National Cemetery, that's also, just like you mentioned about Arlington, there's big regulations on that for obvious reasons. I love dogs, I've got two of them, you know, and as Mr. Traynor had mentioned, you know, some of the roads in town are not the best for walking a dog. So it's definitely dangerous, and it's certainly in dusk time and so forth, and we live on up on the road, and I mean, even that's wide and nicely paved and everything else, and it's still, my wife is always taking our provenance right off the road as soon as a car comes. So it is definitely a concern. I would kind of second on the idea of trying to develop some kind of a park or something like that that's a little bit safer and dedicated towards that. Obviously, in the interim, you have to come up with different solutions towards this, as you know, Mr. Russo had mentioned about, you know, possibly having a walking trail, but it does shift some burden onto the Highway Department if they're going through to clean and do the normal maintenance of that area as well. So a happy medium has to be found, but I definitely think exploring a possible dog park, I mean, we could use that along those lines would be nice, which does require you have to have access to it and so forth as well. And that would require cleanup also, so that's another concern, and who's going to have dominion over it?
Could I have a second?
Sure.
May I just add one thing, which I forgot to say, an important part. If we were to pursue my proposal of allowing dogs on the, on the roads in the cemetery, I think the other piece of that would be absolutely leash law, leash would be required and cleaning up after the animal, and if either of those rules or regulations was violated, loss of the privilege of going there, and I think that might solve a lot of issues as well.
The problem I have...
The one thing I, sorry, the one thing I will say on that about parking in the road is if we do have a burial and somebody's parked in the road, they might not know when trying to get traffic through is kind of hard.
I feel uncomfortable, quite frankly, with your suggestion, Mark. We do, we owe the town a solution to the issue of dogs walking. I don't think the cemetery is the right solution, though, except if we could, I don't even know if it's feasible to have a walkway around it.
Could at some point, it...
Well, I guess you could look into the logistics of what that would take.
There's not much around it that's not grazed, if that makes sense.
But we own the land behind the stone wall.
A little bit of it, yes.
Yeah.
Sounds like a CPC project to me.
The other thing is that I noticed that there's a gentleman who lives in town who has a dog handling business, and he goes to Harry Jason Park. I see his truck there a number of mornings when I'm going over to Hallipex. I don't know if that's a potential solution. We also own, as I've mentioned in the past, 10 acres across the street from Harry Jason Park on the other side that, at least when I look at the map, it looks like it's 80% to 90% clear. It does slope a little. I don't know if the slope is something that would mitigate that or not, but I think 10 acres. If you go on to the, yeah, we went down, took a look at it.
Yes.
It abuts a sawchuck land, it looks like sawchuck land, and I think if we were going to pursue it, we'd have to get a survey and make sure we know exactly what we own. But the property record says 10 acres, so we'll see. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong by an acre or two, it's not, yeah, yeah. So Elizabeth?
Finish?
Nope, yeah.
So all of these solutions you talk about are wonderful, but I'm 79 years old, I don't think I'm going to be here. When you do all this stuff, so I'm more interested in the here and now. So I kind of wrote what I have to say because Brigitte doesn't have to take notes, there you go, and I'll give everybody a copy just so that you know what my feelings are, too. I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
I don't know what I did. I think Arlington National Cemetery is a really very good example, since we have an ancient, several centuries old cemetery where we don't, as I said in my note, we don't actually see that many people in the cemetery. I've only, in my seven or eight years around town, have only come across about 10 people there because of the stated reasons in my letter, which is that I choose my times carefully. I'm not there on holidays, weekends, lunch hours, whatever. I try to choose my times, I drive past to see if there are any cars in there. The few people I've met have been fine, I've had a picnic with people, I've just met some college students who are doing a paper on the cemetery, I met a man who's actually archiving the artwork and sending it to Harvard, so there's just a lot of stuff going on there. And my feelings are, I'm always up for a compromise, which I think is great, waiting for these walking paths, I mean, I don't know when that's going to happen. I'd like to see us consider, I mean, you all talk about respect, I have great respect, and that's what I'm stating. I did not get upset about being told there were rules, I got upset about being told I should be showing respect, because I am showing respect. That's something we can debate philosophically, but I don't want anyone telling me that I'm not showing respect. That was when I got upset. And, oh, I always clean them after my dogs, I told you that.
And litter bags.
And, and, yeah, with litter bags and so on, yep, I do that. But anyway, sorry about the scratch on your car, I was not about to leave my dogs behind, I don't like being approached in the car like that, it just, it bothers me.
Understandable.
And I don't know who you are. I didn't know who you are.
One of my guys was in the cemetery weed-whacking, and the barrels were taken to be emptied, that was left on the ground, witnessed by one of my employees, next to basically where the barrel was, there was no barrel, it was just left there.
So I assume this is a...
Not by me, my dog.
That was one of my employees that took a picture of it on the ground. He did not take a picture of you doing it, but...
My dog, please, yeah, I wasn't, it's, believe me when I tell you I'm not the only one that walks dogs there, we discussed that in person. I'm not the only person in that cemetery by any stretch of the imagination, and you saw that on Facebook or whatever, somebody also wrote to say they walked their dogs there, so...
What's your feeling about Harry Jason Park?
I do go there.
Okay.
Had a little issue with Lyme disease because it's full of ticks, but that's probably the weeds everywhere, I mean, I'm sure, but yeah, I go there all the time, and so far that's worked out really well, because there are paths in the woods, as I say, it's kind of tickish, but that's okay. And the reason I was here before, and again, is because I had heard they were closing that also for dogs. So it's getting like, you know, where do we go? And that's, so I kind of want to be on record for that, I want to know, like, where do we go?
I'm not aware that we've talked about closing Harry Jason Park to dogs.
Perhaps it was a rumor.
And actually, that's...
No problem, if that's not happening, I don't need the cemetery, I'll go there all the time, I'm just so concerned that, and of course, I don't go when there are games or when there are people there, or any of that stuff.
It is the good outcome of this discussion is, I think we're honing in a little bit more on who has authority at these various areas. Harry Jason Park is the authority, is the Recreation Commission, as shown on the sign. At the cemetery, it's the burial agent and us. Churchill Park and Cato's Ridge and Two Brookes is under the auspices of the Conservation Commission, so sometimes we have authority, sometimes others.
But we do have authority over dogs in any of those spaces?
I don't think so. I think those policies are made by the legal authorized agent.
Liz, I'm going to ask you to look into that, so we have any answer to it, but in any case, we have already got rules and regulations for the cemetery.
We do.
I think...
Where did they come from, do you know? I mean, who did, who...
It precedes Rob in town, he says that's 19 years ago, so I don't know.
I think Joe Mckay, he made him up 30 years ago.
19 years?
I've been employed by the Highway Department 19 years, I've been in this town my entire lifespan.
Born and raised.
He's only 20. Wow.
I do think we should consider Jason, Harry Jason Park as an alternative.
If that's going to, if that's...
I'll talk to the Recreation Committee.
In danger or threatened, that's fine with me.
I'll talk to the Recreation Committee. The only issue we had with Harry Jason was originally was that when soccer was in play...
Yeah, right, I get it.
The Denneitt School fields were just torn up, and they knew they wouldn't get much beyond June, and it would be just a mud spot. So the idea was to hold the out-of-town games at Denneitt, but all the practices that are Harry Jason, and I'll get a reading on what's their thinking on that, because I haven't seen any of that to date.
Yeah.
And then we'll get back.
I saw a schedule on the day in there.
Yep. I did, we owe you an, we owe you an answer, we owe the town...
Not me.
It's no, but you representing what a lot of people in town feel.
That's why I'm here.
Yep.
I assume that all the rules are enforced equally at all these places, is that correct?
You know, part of the rules are, if you see it, you're supposed to stop it, but I don't believe it happens, because we see it all over.
Uh huh, yeah, okay.
It doesn't matter whether we're in Cato's Ridge or out on the fields here, it's just, I don't understand the people, don't feel the responsibility to the pickup after them.
I don't understand it, except the only thing I can tell you is I do see kids walking dogs after school. My kids did it, everybody's kids do it, and I'll tell you what, they're on their phone, they're not picking up after their dogs.
Absolutely.
I guarantee you that's a problem.
Yes.
And there's nothing anybody's ever going to do about that, and this is a country town, and in the cemetery, there are coyotes and bears and turkeys and every other thing, disrespecting the ground. This is life. So if you guys want me on Harry Jason Park, I'll go there, but I would love to see some sort of solution where we could spend some time enjoying the park, enjoying the cemetery, just like everybody else does. It's a nice place to get exercise.
I don't have a prob, I have, I have an issue, if you mean by enjoying it with the dog.
Oh, I know that, I know. Okay.
Okay.
I've had my say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening, I appreciate it.
I wish more people would come out like you, Elizabeth, and, you know, bring your views right to us.
Well...
Makes it easier.
I represent all the elderly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
I do think we have to pay attention, this has come up a number of times. We need to start getting into, let's find a solution that makes sense with the town.
Well, and I think that's true, on the other hand, this, the problem of dogs and degree of freedom is endless and goes on everywhere. In the 10 years I've been a selectman, it's the subject I fear the most by far.
I agree. It's the one that has the most emotion with it.
We already have the issue with the Denneitt, too, you know, the dogs as well, so it's pretty all-encompassing in the town, so...
It is. Okay, Rob, did you want to talk about things beyond dogs and parks?
No.
One of the things I would... That's it?
I'll have you sit up, if you want me to hang out, I will.
I would think we ought to have some new signs posted, though, at all of the entrances right at the start, so people aren't, you know, so they're aware.
I will have some new signs made up.
Yep, okay. And we'll do them in yellow, maybe, like the...
Begin with that.
Like the engine brake ones that we had redone?
Maybe not, maybe that's a little too gosh.
I mean, if I can interject for a moment on one thing, it would be a possibility, I don't know how much it would cost or otherwise, obviously, but is to have those little ones with the little pull, the baggies for the dogs, you know, and that would kind of encourage it, you know, if we can maybe explore that.
The only thing I'll say is the barrels that sit there, they wind up with like...
A lot in there.
...water, and it gets nasty, and there are a lot of diseases you can get from ticks, I mean, not ticks, from dog poop. I can't pronounce half the words, but you wrote them last line on that, is a whole handful of them.
Right. You know, one of the solutions probably at some point is going to be that we're going to have to have a service, you know, like, what is it, Hey Dear?
Oh Dear.
Oh Dear. Just because, there'll always be that 10%, it doesn't matter whether we do...
It doesn't, you know, it don't bother me when somebody brings their dog out when they're going to visit, like, their family, like, that's okay, but when it's a consistent using it, that's when it's, you know, it's not your visiting, you're using that for...
All right, so how do we want to go forward? Do we want to form a committee, we want to just get more information and start to think about this?
I can pull some information as well about some town-owned parcels, so why don't we start there? And I'll also look into the regulations as far as Harry Jason is concerned, so we get an answer on that.
Okay.
I can also pursue pricing, there's a dog waste removal service in Carver right near the Oh Dear place.
Isn't it part of it?
It's part of it.
I think it might be part of the same company, Ghost, is that it?
Yeah, I think it's part of it.
So I can call and get some pricing for that. You may also want to pursue getting pricing from Oh Dear because it's environmentally friendly about spraying for the ticks and mosquitoes, maybe at Harry Jason and all the sports fields, just for the safety of the kids and everything, especially if we're doing the project to light up the field, there's going to be a lot of use there at night. So why don't I gather pricing on some of that and see...
Can you also reach out to your peers in the towns that touch upon us and see, I know Kingston has a dog park.
Right, Situate has one, too, that's kind of conveniently located, and it doesn't look like it was that expensive to construct, it just has some sort of like turf put down.
I did take a look at this before, Province Town has one that's rated in the top 10 in the country.
Oh, I looked at that one after you suggested it a while back.
And it's an on an acre and a half, and, except for the artwork in the dog park, it made sense, so maybe we could look at that, too.
I can look at that, and I did sign up for a municipal account with the Petco Grant Program, so I want to see if we're eligible maybe for some sort of donations. I was trying to think outside the box, and I saw that they had a feature where you could enroll as a governmental agency, so I can pursue that avenue a little more as well.
Maybe once we sort of get this all together, we reach out to Kathy Linatra.
Okay, we can do that.
Maybe, Mark, you could take the lead? That'd be great.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'd like to do it.
But I can report back for the next meeting with some of this.
Great. Where are we? We've done Highway, Dogs, Warrants, Town Administration, Correspondence, did we have...
Nope, I think you're down to Raves.
We're down to Raves. So every meeting we do, it's set it out as Raves and Rants, we sort of stopped rant, except I have a little rant this one, and gone to Raves.
Rants, John, no rants, no rants, John.
I guess my, I'll start it off if nobody likes, and my rant is, we had 27.6% turnout for the election, which is pretty high compared to our history, but it frustrates me that the other 74% or whatever the number is can't take the 10 or 15 minutes it takes to get here and vote, and I assume it's because, one, they have a lot going on in their lives, and they're just not, they're not thinking about town government, et cetera. They're somewhat happy, if they weren't, they'd probably be here. This is sort of where you...
I agree.
You agree?
Yes.
Thank you. So I do think one of our things going forward, and I think you talked about it in your campaign, is how do we find more avenues to reach out to people and get them on board? But I am frustrated by the fact that we can't get to 50%, but we'll see. But we'll see.
It was, and there was quite a, looking at the numbers, there's quite a discrepancy. It'd be really good if people, when they came to vote, knew all the people running and all the things to be filled because those numbers are not very even, you know? It's, you think 100 people come to vote, you have 100 votes when we're the other for every, um, office.
Well, we have four.
Not that way when you look at the numbers, so.
We had four write-ins.
Pardon?
Four write-ins, candidates?
Yeah.
And that kind, I think-
We had an awful lot of ballots. I was counting them, that only, people only filled in one or two spots and left the rest of it blank.
But that's, that counts in the 27.6%.
Oh, yeah, that, that wasn't my point. My point was it'd be good if people knew how to come and vote for town government.
Yep.
You know, I mean, it's just like, there's somebody at libraries, somebody at school, not just whatever.
One of the things we used to have is the booklet that Paul Scribner did on town meeting protocol. And I know Barry DeCristofano has said he's updating that. Maybe in that, we could maybe use, I don't know, somehow put some information in there that might entice people to come forward. But I do think we need to work on getting more people here.
It's another one of those chronic problems, locally, statewide, nationally, and, um, but I totally agree in, um, we're fairly strong-willed, strong-hearted citizenry with lots of opinions. And the more we get it out there and talk about it, the more we find the underlying, um, confluence of interest. And, um, so I agree. Anything we can do for, um, public participation, the better. Also, we tend to have boards and commissions and committees that are endlessly looking for more talent.
Absolutely. Do you have a-
I'm going to, I'm going to turn it a little bit on the opposite side of it. So I'm going to turn from a rant to a rave on the fact that that many people did participate, and there was that much. And to go off on what Mrs. Russo said, one of the things I would say is that I think you're absolutely correct on it. I think that people have to understand what those positions are. And I think one of the things that may be underutilized, I mean, I do see it on Facebook, as far as what our Facebook page for the town. Most people now rely more on social media. It's just a natural thing. A lot of people don't use websites as much. It's, you know, sometimes hard, even on our town websites, it's kind of hard to negotiate in some respects, even find when things are open and so forth. But as soon as you put something on Facebook, it comes up very quickly. You know, in my tenure with, uh, the Police Department, when I was working with Chief Clancy, when he was here, we talked about that ad nauseam, as far as, you know, social media, utilizing Twitter and other avenues that when we have a power outage in town, there's an emergency or something like that. And it gets out to people like that. I think to a certain extent, we're expecting people to kind of search for things versus having knowledge presented to them. I think if we did a, uh, social media campaign that says, kind of explaining, maybe even focusing on one particular board, this is what they do. This is how often they meet. These are different requirements for it. This is what we need to have to have people step up, you know, and to actually be involved in it. Because, I agree with you, I think some of the people didn't know what those positions were. So there was some confusion. They get some of the bigger things, but some of the smaller things may go by the wayside. But I think if we had a better explanation of it, and it doesn't have to be a pedantic thing, that it's like this whole thing, okay, this is, that's what this board, this is that board, you know what I mean? It's like, you pick one, and you kind of focus on that. And that's what these people have done. And let the people who've held positions speak on that. You know, let them say, hey, I've had tenure with that particular position for five years, or I did a three-year term, and this is what I did in that amount of time. And encourage those people to speak up. Because I think a lot of it has to come down to the people, it's the fear of the unknown. They don't know what it is. And when they walk into that polling booth, they may not have even known that those were choices. And now they're looking at it going, oh, okay, well, I don't know this thing, you know? So to be indecisive in that case makes it difficult. And especially if you're writing in, because now you have to have knowledge of those people as well, unless they're handing out stickers, and even then, it's kind of last minute, you know? But I think that's something to explore. I think that's something that, you know, maybe through social media could get a little bit more involvement, for lack of a better term, for people to have them understand what the, you know, what it entails to do that position.
I think that could make really good sense, especially if that were presented as an item on its own, not as a conversation. Because you can't open that conversation in a forum like that. Because then whoever posted ends up cutting through all the stuff, because, you know. But if it just posted there to read-
Right.
You're right. That's, that's where people read now.
And not pedantic, like, you know, not knowing, name every single thing, because I think people just, you know, most people, unfortunately, and as our resident just mentioned over there, people on their phone, they don't, if it goes beyond a couple of paragraphs, you're done. They're not going to read it because it's just too much. You know, I still love to pick up a book and read a book. I like having a book in my hands to actually physically read it. But a lot of people now, if you're going to be going over a couple paragraphs, they're not going to do it. So I think something short, sweet, focusing on one particular part of the board, or whatever the duties are and so forth. And like I said, let people, if they want to chime in on it, just a quick blurb, just let them know, yeah, a couple sentences, that's all you have to do. You don't have to write a book, you know? Maybe have a better understanding. Mike?
So I have a rave. And it's for two former Plumpton Selectmen with whom I've served. Um, one of them, Joe Freitas. Joe had plenty of flaws, many, many flaws, actually. As well, he and I could disagree about just absolutely everything. Yet, I'm going to come to the rave. And the other rave is for Christine Joy, who I served with for the last six years. Um, I learned a lot from both of these people. Joe, when, when he was dying, essentially, in the hospital, I went to visit him a lot, and we became, uh, sort of odd fellow friends along the way, which I remember very fondly. But what I, what I learned from both of them is that there's some fundamental things about how to be a good selectman. And what I also learned is it's not very complicated. So a few things I think I learned. One, for selectmen is to show up. Two, is to do the work. I, Joe was so emphatic about that, is, is for new people coming onto boards, commissions, committees, attending the meetings, studying, learning, learning what the issues are. By far, the most important thing I learned from them is regardless of ideology, the town, the best interests of the town is always our first interest. So I'm really grateful to have spent time with those two people and the leadership model that they offered to us. And, um, I actually think about them all the time as we wrestle with issues and complications, and each in their own way on how they would handle it. And, um, I'm appreciative that I have those kind of models to lean on.
Thank you. Just one thing before we leave. It was partly under the reorganization of the board, if you don't mind, if I tap back into that. I understand that you've asked that maybe we take a look at the hours, and maybe you can just tell us what you're thinking in terms of how you want to do this. I think we're willing to discuss it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just thinking an earlier time for, timeframe for my business would work out a little bit better. So if we did it in the afternoon, earlier in the afternoon for these meetings, and also that would allow for seniors and members of the town government to not be inconvenienced to actually attend our meetings. So if we were talking about something around 1:30, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, will we have these meetings? Obviously, if we had a public hearing or something else that's slated that has to be in the evening, then we have it in the evening. But for some of the meetings to come in a little bit earlier, I think that would be more conducive all around. And I think, like I said, to have seniors involved as well. So they may not be able to make it later at night and so forth. They don't want to come as long, so.
People who work during the day.
Well, with that, we're being televised as well. So one of the things is, as far as with that, with the videos and so forth, they can do that as well, so.
I think, Liz, you mentioned this before, and-
Yeah.
So where my headset is, I wouldn't feel uncomfortable running a pilot, say, through the summer, July and August, start with the new fiscal year, with the understanding that in September, we go back to 5:30, discuss what our findings are, and then make a decision how we want to go forward. Does that feel all right with you, or?
I, I'm, I'm willing to give it a try. I'm, I'm really hesitant on this. I, I, when I first ran for a selectman, maybe 11 years ago, in large part, it was a lack of civility in this board and a lack of transparency. I mean, it wasn't so long ago that decisions were pretty much literally the cigar-filled back rooms and selectmen making the decisions that way. And, um, actually, one of the many things, but near the top of the list, that I pride myself on and pride the Board of Selectmen on how we have been the last decade, is how transparent we are. And I'm pretty sensitive to complaints of citizenry that we're not available. And I'm a little concerned that the afternoon would be better for seniors, might be better for engineers, lawyers, and the like during working hours. But, you know, traditionally, these meetings have been at night so that people could come and go, so that citizens could come in. And certainly, one of the things we're actually interested in generally is so often, we have these meetings, and John's back there, and the rest of the place is empty. I'm not sure afternoon helps. I mean, it'd be great for me. I'm much more awake in the afternoon, and actually not tongue-tied. Sometimes I can say stuff. So watch out if we do this.
Fair enough.
But I, I'm, in any event, I'm rambling a little, but I, I'm, I'm absolutely willing to give it a try. Certainly, we have to be a little malleable. Each of us have lives and work and all that stuff. So I'm giving, I'm willing to give it a try, but I'm also want to be incredibly careful that the personality of this board includes bending over backward for transparency.
I agree.
I agree, too. I, you know, we, we can't start it earlier because we have a public hearing at our next meeting in June.
Correct.
Which is already posted-
Public hearing, it's already been advertised.
Yeah. So I think the first meeting in July, and we'll just run it July and August, and-
Okay.
I'm agreeable to that.
Then we'll take a look at it.
Mm-hmm.
Would you say that again?
We're going to meet at 2 o'clock, I would say, for our meetings in July and August, the Board of Selectmen, with the idea of evaluating whether or not it makes more sense than meeting as we do now at 5:30.
So if I choose to participate in Board of Selectmen's meeting, I can watch it on TV instead, or watch it on Area 58?
You can certainly watch it on Area 58. They're all, they're all recorded. But when I go onto Area 58, it tells you how many people have gone in to look at it. It's miniscule. I mean, literally, it's-
So then why should we have a Board of Selectmen if nobody's going to look at it, and nobody's going to participate, you know?
Well, that's back to the issue of, you know, why people don't vote so often. But part of it is, at least some of those people feel that the board is doing okay running the town, and they don't feel the need to-
The board is doing a good job running the town, and I like being able to come in and visit, as I do from time to time, when I'm not watching it on TV and writing it. I like to come in and visit.
So your concern is, you can still come in, but your concern is that the 2 o'clock hours probably doesn't fit your-
I, I own my own business, so I can come and go, pretty much. I can make arrangements for my schedule, pretty much, without a great deal of difficulty. But not everybody can.
That's, I see this as a pilot, Deb, just to see whether it works. If it doesn't work, we-
I'd see what happens.
Yeah. I am a little frustrated that when people say they can't get information, we have it on YouTube, we have it on Area 58. We have the Library Speaker Program, oftentimes, which does the same updates. It just doesn't feel like-
Have it in the newspaper?
In the newspaper, thank you. I appreciate it. You can, I won't say it.
John, if I may, do you think it's worth revisiting at some point with Area 58 if the meetings could be broadcast live-
Yes.
-in real time, so that then the recording would also be up,